I think they wanted to send a message.
All right, good evening.
I know Asbo did that.
I'm happy to welcome you to the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Educations. Regular meeting. It is Tuesday, October 10. And may I hear a motion for approval of the minutes?
So who?
Second. Discussion. All those in favor? That's announced. Motion passes. We have a moment for public comment. Seeing as we have no public other than esteemed colleagues, we will move on to reports and discussion, the annual independent audit report.
I'm Joe Klyback.
My name is Matthew Dubois. I've been part of the agent team the last five years.
Thank you very much. We just had a, I want to have a meeting with the Audit Committee. We went through a lot of the financial statements. There's many issues that we will be facing in the district and new accounting pronouncements in the next year that we've discussed at length. And I'll just kind of hit the highlights of the meeting. What we had is a report to the board. Our report to the board is required communication. What tells us what our responsibility is and the way the audit was conducted during the current fiscal year into June 30, 2017. So we have audited management's financial statements. The board hires us to determine whether or not the financial statements are presented in our filings with generally accepted accounting principles, which in this case is promulgated by the Government Accounting Standards Board. We have to tell you what significant accounting policies were fairly consistent, but there was one to one that was implemented during the district fiscal year, it was called Statement Number 72, Fair Value Measurement Application. It really means that any investments the district does have is supposed to be reported at fair value rather than at cost. Accounting estimates are all a very important part of your financial statements, especially the district-wide governmental financial statements, which includes all of your current activities such as what's in the general fund, plus all your long-term activities, which isn't in the general fund, such as your capital assets and your long-term liabilities. The estimates are basically involving those items that are now in your general fund. Useful like your capital assets, that's how you can appreciate your buildings, your equipment, your vehicles, is an estimate. And it's fairly consistent with all accounting policies of schools of difference. Accounting for pensions, a new pronouncement that was enacted several years ago, GAT 68, required the district to report its funded status, proportionate share, the liability of both the teachers' retirement system and the employer retirement system. Those estimates are provided directly by those systems and those estimates and related financial data audited by the state's auditors, KPMG, to report those liabilities for your financial statements. Competent absence's liability is managed for the liability of competent absences for accumulated sick vacation or leave payouts. And we evaluated those factors and those were all reasonable in light of all the circumstances. And the other most important liability is the other post-employment's benefit obligation, really for retiring health insurance. The management estimate for that liability was developed by an actuary firm who actually changed its assumptions during the year, increasing your liability by about $5 million into overall financial statements for the year. There are certain disclosures of long-term debt in your financial statements, Note 8, is there your long-term debt obligations, Note 9, is the pension note. Other post-employment benefits is in Note 11, the disclosure of your risk management policies, Note 12, current financial statements, and disclosure commitments and contingency, Note 13. Draft financial statements can be provided here. We will be issuing several questions. At Thomas Horowitz' family will make those. And finally, they'll be approved hopefully at the next meeting, so you can be filing that language with New York State SED, which is October 50. No difficulties at all encountered before the audit is made. And attest to, your accounting staff is tremendous and is able to provide us all the information we need to conduct our audit in a very organized fashion. Corrected or uncorrected statements. Were required to tell you if we made any journal entries and audit entries were made were really material, like little balances. We had no disagreements with management. We will be awaiting management's representation letter, which will give us the, our professional standards require one of those, so we issued the financial statements, which we hope will be dated today. And we will issue our reports dated today. Management, there is no other consultation with other accountants such as second opinion shopping. If there was second opinion shopping, we would have to call the other firm who is doing that, making sure we get the same facts and circumstances here, the other firm. There was none of that during the year. During the year, we discussed a variety of matters such as new GASB pronouncements. One thing that's happened was a way of filing your reports with the state. There's a new New York State SED portal that the superintendent will have to certify the financial statement, sending it through a portal. I make sure that Tom had all that information, so we can get that timely. So I expect it went very well. We had just override of our opinion. We will be giving you a clean, unmodified opinion on your financial statements, that they are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We had no matters to discuss related to material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in your internal control over financial reporting as required by government auditing standards. We had a couple comments, recommendations for the board to consider in our letter that's dated confidential. It's called our management letter. And I'm going to have management look through it really quick.
So during our audit, we noted some recommendations that we wanted to present to you. First one is we got word from Tom that the district's accounting software package, Informatic, is in the late stages of its operating life and not being supported until January 1st, 2020. And it does take a considerable amount of time and preparation to switch over to accounting software. So it is our recommendation that the district does create a succession plan for a new accounting software. The next recommendation we have is in your special aid fund, which is where you report your federal revenue and expenses all in one fund. Over the years, there had been determined that there are non-reversable expenses that had been reported inside that federal special aid fund. So there were some old accounts receivable accounts that had grown older than five years, and we decided that it was best to write those revenues off this year. So what happened on an accounting level is there were expenses that should have been reported inside the general fund that had been reported in your special aid fund. And it's our recommendation that the district budget for transfer from the general fund to the special aid fund in the amount of the deficit, which is roughly $129,000. Our last one is the GASB 75 statement that will take place fiscal year beginning after June 15, 2017. So that is currently being represented on your June 30, 2018 financial statements. And it's a change to GASB 45, and it's going to have a large impact on your statement net position, which is your snapshot of all the things, all your assets and liabilities at the end of the year. And it is going to require an actuary report this year to implement.
Yeah, sure. The effect of that implementation will be a cumulative effect on prior fund balance. We estimate right now, based on that most recent actuary report, which changed during the year from the previous year because of different assumptions. And we recommend that all of the board members get a copy of the actuary report, so you can review it. And that increased your total overall liability by about, from 18 million to, from 49 million, really to 82 million dollars. That change from your financial statement amount, which is now reported 18 million, is going to be an effective around $64 million increase in the liability for post-employment benefits other than pensions, which will affect your June 30, 2018 government-wide financial statements. And I want to stress, it's only on your government-wide financial statements. It is not on the fund financial statements in which the board monitors the budget and then expenditures very closely. So it's a numbers-only thing. All governments in the United States are going to have to record their full liability for retiring health benefits at one point. Full disclosure by the GASB is now being required, just like the recording of your pension liabilities, your proportionate share of pension liabilities is being done now. Basically, the financial statements right now reflect a very even statement of net position. Usually have a slight deficit here of $1,700,000 overall. Statement net position, which is really not too bad until you see the cumulative effect next year of this implementation, the GASB 75. Your funds, our, the general fund is what's the most important aspect of the district's finances. And as the end of the year, the district's fund balance was $2,417,000, and it was a decrease of $534,000 compared to previous year. But the board did approve the use of fund balance of the $2,150,000 used towards fund balance, and only $534,000 of the fund balance was used. You will be at 1.28% of the recommended of the balance. It's allowed to be retained as unassigned fund balance, where the regulation required that it can't be no more than 4%. So you're in compliance with the real estate law on fund balance. Again, a clean, unmodified opinion on your financial statements and no material weaknesses in your internal control over financial reporting. That's what I emphasize, they have very positive management's results and their control over the finances.
Thank you. Would you accept questions from members of the board?
Thank you for your report. You just said that we only, we have a 1.28% unassigned?
Yes. That's going to change.
This is going to change. Okay, all right. That's my question. And can you explain a little bit more the GASB 75? What's that going to look like in real time for the district? That's a huge liability.
Right. If you, and the financial statements, the most current actuary report, full value report is on page 55. And on page 55, this is the required supplemental information, scheduled funding progress, which the New York State are now allowed to fund. Okay? There's no trust system set up, there's no legislation allowing you to fund. Of other post-employment benefits liability, which is to say, the district's responsibility for paying future inactive retirees healthcare benefits until, whatever the, according to the bargain it says, until death or whatever, if you're covering the, these, your retirees for health insurance. And this is the district's cost that's going to happen. If you were to close today, actuary says your liability would be $82,314,000. Okay? That's what's supposed to be reported. That dollar amount is now reflected in your financial statements currently because the old GASB under 45 was allowing you to bring that over 30 years. Okay? They didn't want, the impact to be so southern. But GASB turned there and said, wait a minute, let's put the hopeful liability in your financial statements. And that's what GASB 75 is going to do. So there's $82 million that's listed there. It's basically going to be the liability that you're going to be reporting in your financial statements. And the cumulative effect of what was recorded to what will be recorded, it will be basically a change to beginning, that asset is reported, will be a prospectus for living dollars, additional liability.
So do we need to put more money in our post-employee benefit reserves? How do, we can't?
Not allowed to.
Okay.
There's no such vehicle.
There should not be any municipality or school district in New York State that has any number in the column that says value of assets right now. So it's going to be a statewide type of thing. Certain states have allowed it to be funded. Texas is an example. You're allowed to set up a trust, it's like you went to a pension trust, so it can only be for that purpose. And governments are allowed to fund it, and that value would be here. And once that value is put into a trust, it reduces the liability of the district. So that's what happens in other states where that's allowed. So it's not allowed because I think if New York State had to record that liability, I don't think, I don't know how they could get it funded. I mean, you know, we pay nothing in taxes, not really, so yeah. There was an increase in that liability that reported July 1, 2014, to 48,740,000. And as of July 1, 2015, based on your actuary report, it went up to 82 million, 82 million. So the increase is kind of explained below. The discount rate was reduced from 5% to 4%, and that was an increase of about $14 million of that liability. They updated the mortality label. They were using people a little longer, so there's going to be longer coverage. And there's been an overall increase in claims costs from what they originally estimated. So that increases the liability. And also there was an increase in participants in demographic debt. So all those things contributed to the increase from 48 million to 82 million. And as I said, the actuary report will provide more information on that.
I have questions. If you want clarified or... It was crystal clear.
So I guess one of the, I know we had...
Yes, Jacqueline.
Sure.
I'm a newbie here. So I might correct an understanding. The bottom line is there isn't anything we need to be doing differently for this.
No, you have to abide by the budget law, okay? And the voters' approved budget and your regulations that address your fund balance and address your resiliency period, okay? The rules and regulations, those are the most important things that you can do.
Okay, yeah, I just meant in terms of addressing this increased liability.
Well, it's all addressed at negotiations with your employees, okay? And if you provide health care benefits, some of the things that could happen is, you know, the employee contribution would be increased. That would reduce the employer's liability, most of the things, okay? But it's, that's where I meant, you know, the actuary looks at the collective agreement, all your healthcare plans in place, all the lives of the people that are there, estimate of when they're going to retire or if they're going to retire, and the closer they get to retirement age, the, they're probably going to retire, so they're increased, the percentage of, those people are going to increase. But someone starts two years, in two years, maybe there's only a 5% probability they're going to stay. So actuary takes that all into account and all the, and the average age, and as I said, they increase mortality tables, that increases your liability.
Sorry, one last question. In the past, you guys have given us sort of a layman's snapshot of the financial statements. Are you going to provide that again for us?
We do have a, they brought a backup document, we'll send it back.
That would be great. That would be great. Thank you.
So we'll send it to Tom if he can.
Yes.
Yeah, I can distribute it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, you've really explained some complex things for many hours to members of the Audit Committee, and we appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
We are, you know, our letterhead, Michael Sirgic, our always talking.
Thank you so much. Thank you. All right. So let's move on to board committee reports. Policy committee.
That's me. So this is our first meeting of the year, and it's the first time in four years, seven new, or five years, have a new member. So we spent a lot of our time talking about what our committee does. For about four years ago, we decided that instead of hiring someone, we would be reviewing all of the district's policies. These policies start numbered at 0, 100, and go all the way through to 9,544. So we started that work about four years ago, and we've been doing that. We're currently in the 6,000 series. The other way that we get policies, they could come to us through our legal counsel will give us policies. Administrators in the district will give us policies that we may need to implement or just want to look at. And then sometimes the board will have topics they want us to talk about. The unit itself will generate topics. And then changes can be made. This can take a little bit of time. Sometimes they have to go to our legal counsel. It can be board smithing, and then it comes to the board for a first reading, and if the board is okay with that, we can come back for a second reading and adoption. If the board's not okay with that, then more changes can be made. So that's pretty much the process and the work that we do in that committee. After that, we started back up again on our review of policies, and we had no changes on the five that we looked at in that time.
Any questions?
I remember last year in finance, we had a meeting with M&amp;C Bank, where they talked about some new features of maybe using online credit to give us some revenue back. I don't remember exactly. Do you remember? I was on the phone, so I was going in and out. But, so were those policies and changes to that in this review, or are they completely separate from?
They would, if it's not a policy we currently have, then it would be a new policy. So is that the credit card charging policy you were talking about?
Well, we do have one.
So that's, so changes to that policy? So that wouldn't, it could come up in the review of our policy, but if it came to the finances' attention, then they would send it to our committee, and then that, that would go on top of it. We'd start that right away looking at it. That's kind of how that works.
Okay.
We do this review basically when we're not doing anything else that comes up that's remediable.
Right. Okay. And I, I think you already said it in one way, but let me just reemphasize that if there is a situation that occurs that might indicate we need to change a policy or to add a policy, that could come out of any of the committees. It could come from administrators like Diane mentioned. So it's, at that point, it's more, well, it doesn't have to be reactive. Often it is. Sometimes we see something coming up and we want to get ahead of the curve, and then we bring a policy to the board. So that could happen at any time during the year. And it's usually something I could say added to the book and not, not always a change in current policy, although that happens from time to time.
There's usually policies in various stages, like some have been wordsmith, some have gone back to someone else. There's always like a handful of ones that are kind of somewhere in the process.
Laura? Well, to that point, so do you guys keep sort of a running list of policies in the works? Because I remember last year, there was a lot of discussion about the acceptable use policy and technology, and that was going back and forth with legal. Is that still...
Again, so...
Folk leading?
Again, to be, to be fair, many, though not all of the policy changes, it depends on the change. You know, if it's like a dramatical change or something like that, then we don't, we don't ship that off to legal counsel. If there's any substantive change to the policy, we do. And you can be honest with you, they have a whole bunch of policies sitting on their desk. But we do keep a running list, so we know what has to be reviewed, what's still hanging out there. We still have policies, they're just not updated to the point where we think they might be, or we're asking our legal counsel's opinion as to, is this okay if we do this? Should we? Sometimes they'll come to us and say, this is a new law, so you have to change this policy. And typically in those instances, they give us a policy already written up. When we're looking through what we already have codified in our policy book and we're suggesting changes, it goes to them, but those wheels grind pretty slowly, to just to be perfectly honest with you.
I'm going to raise my hand and call myself to ask you two questions about policy. One is, is there a, is there a sort of a way to consult with NISBA or look at on a yearly basis recommendations about review of policies? Like, do they, do they have a clearinghouse?
Yeah, you want to join the service, go right ahead.
Which is not giving that impression.
Yeah, I mean, but they, typically, I'm always ripping out stuff on the in-board. They put stuff in there, so I usually bring those in, we'll talk about, do we have this? Do we not have that?
Okay. That's an approximation.
Yeah, because they usually put the big ones in there just for you.
Okay. And then my second question is, have you had a chance yet to put on your agenda discussion of the extra classroom activity fund?
We just talked about that we would be...
We will have to.
Yeah, we will have to.
As a result of the control as well.
And sometimes we hope that there is a policy to start with. Other times, we kind of have to start from scratch, which makes the process a lot longer. Or sometimes you're trying to like get them, you know. We've been known to look at other websites.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then sometimes, you know, agencies like the Comptroller's Office will ask them for, hey, do you have a boilerplate policy? And they'll say, no.
Yeah. You need to have this, but we don't have it.
Basically figured out.
Figure it out yourself, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just saying, they're not handing us stuff on this little device.
So it's on your agenda? That was my only question.
Well, it will. It has to be when the Audit Committee and Tom work together on the...
Corrective Action.
Corrective Action Plan, thank you, which we're required to do within 90 days of a couple weeks ago when they went live with the final report. That has, we don't have to do it by then, but the Correction, Corrective Action Plan has to say, we will develop a policy on extracurricular activities, accounts. And technically, you have until next, I think, next year to, if you want, I'm not saying you have to wait that long, but they give you a period of time to do that. But that'll have to be in our corrective action plan. We will, we will do that.
Okay. So Audit Committee will be recommitting soon.
So things come to us from other committees all the time.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for policy? Let's move on to finance.
I'll read finance, since I took the notes for the meeting. So there were three main things that we were discussing. And the first one, Tom opened up the meeting with the fact that the computer lease that we had approved from BOSI's had an unexpected cost increase of 15,000. After analysis, Steve Jensen believed that the in- has reduced the original amount of our lease from 66,785 to 32,904. I think there is a memo in the board packet referring to this. The additional cost was in relation to the domain environment part of the plan, which increases the ability of our schools to talk to one another, and the issue of non-compatible domains, which apparently the schools have. And this is not part of the smart bond, so this is something completely separate. The other thing that we discussed was brought up, I think, during, through some emails in regards to potential state aid money due back to our district. We talked about that. There are companies who provide this service. Their fees range from 15 to 25% of the money due, but the company does not guarantee your district actually retrieving the overpaid money due back to the district. That job becomes ours. There has not been a resounding success rate of retrieving money back from the state, and the state itself is running 10 years behind in reviewing districts' state aid. So there's, so there's that.
Any of that.
Yeah. So the new fun thing that New York has handed us is the state mandated long-range financial plan. So there's, so we're now mandated to create this financial plan, which is to forecast three to five years out. Every year, we'll require an updated plan to be made public in our budget brochure. The state wants us to look beyond the budget of this year and detect any potential future financial stress. The biggest factor in long-range financial planning are the assumptions, such as healthcare, teacher retirement, special education enrollment, et cetera. So the next question is, how are we going to be tracking this data for the long-range financial plan mandate? Tom showed us a couple of options. The New York State Comptrollers and ASBO provide software for tracking, but there is no detail, and both are very, very basic. Both New York State Comptrollers and ASBO software does not allow for account codes, does not allow for choosing actual line items for particular fluctuations. Another software program is Forecast Five that does provide a wide range of detail and graphics, good for the budget brochure that we'll be sending out. People will actually see a visual as opposed to just numbers. The Forecast Five allows forecasting by using account codes, and because of the detail, you can use line by line, and you can manipulate the specific assumptions. Forecast Five calculates what past increases and decreases have occurred. Forecast Five cost is between 6,000 and 7,000 through Bosse's, which means that we will get 50% back the following year. This is not a lease. The, this tool, Forecast Five, it's much more robust in forecasting the what-ifs of the budget, personnel benefits, special education, transportation, et cetera. And whilst at the convention, we will stop by the Forecast Five booth, get a sense of their company, their product, and if we like, we'll be here, discuss a visit with a demonstration back in Rhinebeck. Any questions? Tom can probably handle those for you.
Question for Finance. Laura?
About the reduction for the Bosse's contract, do we have a sense of how we're going to spend this $30,000 that we're now?
No, we're reducing it.
I, I know, but we've got 66,000 that was approved back in May, and now we're only going to spend 32, so.
We're only going to borrow 32. We're not borrowing. We're giving the money back.
Okay.
This is, this will allow the bank to take back the money, so we don't pay it on that money. And what you're being asked to do tonight as an agenda item is to vote on a formal motion to say, you know what? We don't want to borrow 60,000 after all, we only want to borrow 30 some odd thousand after all, and we borrow less, we have to pay back less, and.
Diane?
So just from my understanding, so the, the cost increase, the 15,000 that was increased, is that, whatever that was, is that what he's taking off, that we're not now going to get all together? Or is the, because the numbers are different?
So.
Like, was there an item that went up 15,000 and now?
No, there was an item that was not included.
Okay, so that's.
The, the Bosse's vendor who does work for us in the computer area forgot to include a $15,000 expense in the project. And once they began to do the project, oh, by the way, we need 15,000. By the way, we would have put that in the lease if that was the case. I don't have $15,000 to do.
So then Steve went back and was able to find that we didn't need another part.
So we're just taking the money away from it, and?
We won't do that this year.
And we will, we'll probably do some part of that project next year.
Okay, so it's not that we don't need it, but we can do without it this year?
Yeah, and we can. We would need 15 grand more than we plan to borrow. And it needs to be done over the summertime. We, we need a couple of weeks, and it would shut.
When, when school's not.
When school's not in session. It's not something you can do during schools, while school's in session.
Other questions? Do we want to, we're going to be talking about long-range planning, okay? So, okay, next Audit.
Well, I think Joe and Matt gave you a pretty good summary, much more than I could do, but, you know, I think that the members of the committee were very impressed with the progress of Tom and the district, and how smoothly the process went. You know, from the numbers, they were accurate and signed off on, and once they were explained to us, I think we became pretty comfortable with them as well, on the changes that are coming down for, you know, the unfunded retiree benefits and stuff. It's pretty daunting when you start looking at those things, but, you know, when you realize you're only paying the premium every year, it's not so bad, I guess. So I don't know if we want to recommend as a committee to adopt the budget or the.
Audit.
I mean, I'd be comfortable doing that tonight. I'm not sure everybody else feels.
Are there other sentiments of that, or things that people would need to know?
I, I have just a couple of detailed questions.
Don't chase them, they're still on the.
No, these, these are budget. So on page 10, there are, you know, the comparison between 2016 and 2017. The percent increase for general support and instruction seems.
It's unfunded retiree benefits.
That's all part of the?
Yeah, that was one of my major questions. I couldn't understand why it was such a big thing.
Okay. I get the transportation, because that's, because we're, we don't have the awful people anymore.
Careful, we're live.
Yes, I know. Those who shall not be named. All right, so this is, that's entirely about the post-employment benefits. All right. And then the other question I had on page 40. In the debt balances, the workers' comp, the ending balance for workers' comp? Is that supposed to be that?
No.
We've zeroed that out?
It's overfunded at this level, so we're getting some money back, and we can use that balance somewhere else in the budget, apparently.
Now, hold on, I'm trying to, you're looking down here, in this part right here?
Yes.
Okay. So last year, the beginning balance was $555,000, and that actually is a liability, which is a negative, in essence. So we're self-insured in Dutchess County, except for Wapenters. Wapenters does their own thing. And we had a fairly significant unfunded liability a couple of years ago. At the end of last year, we were actually in a positive. So we went to the positive, and actually someplace, somewhere around here, though it's not shown here, we actually have a positive $66,000 balance. We don't get that money. It doesn't come to us. It's just like de-hacking, in and out, in and out, and year-to-year adjustments are made, you know, based on, you know, contribution rates. So we've been, I'm not sure if that's right. Workers' comp has been, has had a great past two years, as far as that's concerned. So at one point, we had an unfunded liability of 10 million in the district, or, not in the, in the county. And we're now a positive, I think, almost 2 million now, after, after three years. Countywide. And of that, our portion is about 66,000. So we have a workers' comp reserve, which isn't listed here at all. It's, we have $145,000 in that.
Right, that was in the beginning.
We're going to have to figure out how and what we want to do with those monies. We can just fold it into the fund balance, we can put it into one of the reserves we already have, but that's a decision we can make down the road when we get to the budget season.
That is good news.
Yeah, we get one of those every year.
Just remember that in Finance, everyone. Any other questions? Okay. Then let's move on to long-range planning.
We suggest that we address 4.2.4 first, and then 4.2.3, just so we're doing.
Okay, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Chronologically, even though they're numbered sequentially.
Right. We'll do September 25th first. All right, so I'm going to sort of do a rock skip. We've had two meetings since our last board meeting. We have designed the informational postcard that is going to go to our entire mailing list. It's about 5,000 or 6,000 people, so I may be going back and forth between these, but Tom's going to print them in-house. We have the capability of doing that, and we will also reach out to the community forum and hope that they post the information as well to get as broader reach as we can for our taxpayers. The hope is that we get a bunch of folks who are not on our general mailing list, our families, to give us their email addresses so that we can communicate with them through this process, and that's sort of, it's the invitation of the postcard. We spent the balance of that meeting talking about options for major budgetary impact moving forward. What kinds of things do we need to look at to save money and preserve the strength of the district? We'd like, as with school start time, to be able to present a suite of options to the community, and these are the things that we've looked at, these are the price tags that are attached to those, so that we can have a more thoughtful conversation moving forward. We talked a lot about shared services. Joe and Tom are going to reach out to our neighboring school districts, their superintendents and business officials, to see if there's any discussion about this out there, or interest. What we talked a lot about is that it's really important for us to start developing these strategies before Cutlass start getting out in the ether. We really need to be able to come out in front of the work that we're doing, so that people can really engage with the conversation, and we know what is important to this district. We talked about electives and the value of the selection of courses that we offer. We'd like to look backward and forward, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in the next seven minutes, so that we get a sense of what kids want to take, what they have historically been taking, and what changes have happened, and where that, those trends seem to be going, and if there's one kid who's taking every elective he can, or if there are, you know, 100 kids who are taking, you know, piecemeal here and there kinds of electives, so we know the interest going forward. We are, Tom gave us new enrollment projections that shows net migration from first grade to 12th grade, so that's actually pretty interesting, rather than just seeing a flat number, you can see how many kids have moved into a particular grade over the years. So we'll work with that a little bit more, and he gave us a draft organizational chart for the district. It's not building level, so it's still pretty, pretty general. We'll talk more about that. Today's meeting, we circled back about the new families that have moved into the district. The net number's about 33. We're trying to cull those names so that we can send them a personal note, asking, you know, welcoming, welcoming them to the district, and asking if they'd be willing to share their reasons for choosing Rhinebeck. As I said, the postcard is going to be about 5,000 or 6,000 cards. We'll get those out by the end of the week. We developed three introductory questions for our first survey, which will go out probably about a week after the postcard mail, so that we have some time to collect extra names if, if they come in. We're hoping they do. And once we get, begin that data collection, we're going to be able to sort of parse new questions based on the information we gather. Hopefully, we'll be able to determine a little bit better what our community advisory council could be helpful with. We then worked on sort of our benchmarks, and it's sort of a benchmark and committee to-do list. So Liz gave us the report about Forecast Five. Tom went through it a little bit with us today, too. The committee, I think, is pretty jazzed about what this program can do for us in a lot of different ways, and that it allows Tom to make assumptions and changes sort of on the fly, so we can see what our discussions really mean financially, I think is a really great thing. So we will all probably rush the Forecast Five stand at NISBA and see if they're willing to give us a discount. We are going to talk at our next meeting on the 16th about the mandated programs in the district. Tom's been collecting programs and service mandate information, so we'll be able to review that. We talked a little bit about the master schedule in all three buildings, and if there are alternate scheduling opportunities that we should be looking at, if it frees up schedule, if it, what would, what it would do for us here if we changed our scheduling philosophy. New Pulse has block schedules, so we can reach out to them and find out why and what it does for them. Joe had mentioned that block scheduling had been sort of a thing of the past that most schools went away from, but we're, we don't really remember why, so we're going to, we're going to do a little more digging about that. We're going to ask Steve Boucher to come and talk to us about the intersection between PE and athletics, and if there is any that, that could be useful for our purposes, and more specifically, I think, about our, our range of athletic offerings, and an understanding of that, you know, at what point do sports teams become unsustainable for lack of participation or whatever? Is it better for us to merge programs or phase them out? How important is the Rhinebeck brand to our community versus having opportunities for kids? So it's, it's a big question. I think it's going to be a survey question that we ask ultimately, but we, we'd like to get his sort of feedback on that. Curriculum, we mentioned this last time. We'd like to get a read from you guys about whether you are interested in a board workshop late this fall or early in the winter to talk about curricular offerings that we have, changes that, you know, we feel we can, might be able to change. I think probably the mandated conversation will play directly into that conversation so that we all have a better understanding of our mandates. We would, we would love to have a full board discussion about that, because clearly, we're just five people in a room. We're also going to circle back with Emily Davison to find out about what Assistive Technologies could do for special education, what she knows about the benefits or not of those. Talked about the electives already, asking guidance to take a look at our scheduling software to see if it can spit out four-year future plans. All ninth graders are, in, rising ninth graders have to put together a four-year plan, so if we could see what their early interests are and map that out for years, it might help us understand what electives are interesting to people. Personnel, Tom's going to continue to compile information on the building level for the organizational chart, so we know where everybody is. We're going to go through that at our October 23 meeting. We'll discuss things like desired student-teacher ratio, and how that intersects with our inclusion models for special ed. The Audit Committee, since you have nothing to do now, see if you can sort of dream up some ways to, think about places we could do a deeper dive to find efficiencies in the district, and what, what that might look like, how we would do that, so. I've, I've included our sort of ongoing to-do list. Hopefully, that'll keep us on track. Hopefully, that'll keep us on track. Any questions?
Any questions for long-range planning? I have a, I guess, question, not just for you, but for everyone. Would it be the will of the board that we investigate the three people from long-range planning who will also be at NISBA?
And Mark, who's in finance.
And Mark, and Mark from finance, that we get very specific information about Forecast 5, and see if there's any kind of favorable rate at which it could be adopted? It'd be nice to know that the board is supportive generally if we had such a conversation.
There's an onsite discount.
I know. Sign up today, and you know.
You're off at Lake Placid, it's like, you should get some discounts.
We have a lift ticket.
I'll take it. I'll put it towards the cost.
Do people feel comfortable with us sort of entering into those? Okay, great. Okay. So that's it for, yes.
Can we vote on that, for treaty-type boardwork workshop?
Oh, yes, indeed, yes, yes. So, how many of us are in favor of having a retreat to talk about curriculum and long-range planning? Ah, brilliant.
How many of you would agree to make yourself available on the same date?
What is it? Actually, Jaclyn.
If anybody would be able to tango with us.
Laura, Jaclyn asked a very good question, is what kind of timeframe are you talking about? It's usually like a few.
Usually, our workshops are two or three hours.
Two or two, three hours?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we were talking about late fall, early winter, as the timing.
Once we have more information.
Can I, can I make a, a bold assumption that we would be looking to do something either in an evening or in a Saturday morning?
I think so.
I think it has to be, right?
Well, yeah, so I, that's why it's a bold assumption.
Yes.
Does anybody have a preference? Evening or Saturday morning, those really are our options? No one has a strong feeling in one way or the other?
Let's see what's possible.
I'm biting our tongues.
You wanna sleep in Saturday morning, don't you?
No, no, I was thinking Saturday morning.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
And let me ask one more question, just to make sure I'm, I'm on the, the same page with the rest of you. We're talking about having Martin Preps facilitate that, is that our game plan? Bringing somebody in from the outside, which there would be cost to that more than likely? And who would you want to run this, or just you want us to sit around at the table and kick, kick it around? No, I'm, I'm serious.
It depends how far, sorry, how far along you are with the discussions, right? What level you would be next.
I think that's right. I think we're gonna have to sort of assess that as we go along, right? Because once we know what our, you know, absolute you must provide list is, I think it'll be easier for us to sort of wrap our arms around a little bit.
Yeah, and I thought I recall from our conversation this morning that we said we would wait till we get a little closer before we actually set a date, because we don't know whether it's going to be in early fall, late fall, early winter.
Right.
Right? So I'm not, I won't bother flying dates out yet, since we're not sure.
I thought you might wanna get us early.
Well, I, I mean, I could, and I'd be glad to, but I don't wanna set a date and then have us get to a week away and say, you know, we're really not ready to, I mean, I could if you want me to, but.
Is it possible to see, like, who's out there and what they offer? Because maybe, you know, I don't know.
Why don't we look when we go to NISBA?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, you know, I don't know what they would say.
Get some information outside facilitator.
Well, maybe we ought, we ought to make sure we're pretty clear on what we want to accomplish there. Yeah, I was gonna say.
That's the problem.
I mean, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. You know, we're saying, yeah, we want a curriculum workshop, which is fine, but I, I don't, I'm not sure we're at the point as a committee of saying, yeah, this is what we're gonna spend two to three hours doing, therefore, I wouldn't know who to go looking for, or what to tell them, hey, this is what we want you to lead our board in doing, or to Marvin, or whomever. So, I think maybe we're more flying the concept out there, and we need to tighten this up before we can actually start to, to make something happen.
Steve? I think some of the timing is really based on what the purpose of it is, right? If you're gonna use it for this next budget cycle, later fall, we're probably better than winter, right? So, I, I think it depends on what the goal is for, is it the this-year goal versus next-year goal for long-range planning? Would help determine the timeline, too.
I, I do think we should view our, our participation in the conference as an opportunity to really hear from a lot of different people, and be thinking about who we can draw on in terms of resources. It is a great clearinghouse, just to find resources. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so let's move on to the 2017 NISBA proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions.
This is our last opportunity to flog that point.
All right, so I'll just start by saying, I attended the Dutchess County School Board Association meeting last Thursday. There was a discussion about the bylaw amendments and resolutions. Really, the discussion there was similar to what we've had here, is that there's really nothing that stands out, although there seems to be a great deal of support for Kipsey Resolution, supporting change in the law for absentee ballots for school votes. A little bit of discussion about the bylaw amendment regarding the organization that wants to have a seat on the board. There was no strong feeling one way or the other, so, you know, I reported out to them that, you know, our board kind of agreed to let me feel it out on that floor and make a decision then. And that's really, that was the extent of the discussion, I think. So, really no more, really not much more discussion there than there we've had here.
Any further questions or directives to mark?
Go forth and be successful.
Disappoint us, Mark.
Keep moving.
Leave the room at all times.
All right. Okay, so let's move on to the comments section of the agenda. Good news. Good news. Yes, Jaclyn?
I just, just to mention that the, the speaker that, the group that went to the Nobel Peace Laureates Summit last year, they made a contact with a gentleman by the name of Dr. Helfand, who was very active in the anti-nuclear movement internationally, and, and he spoke to our kids at the high school here this past spring, and his group actually won the Nobel Peace Prize for this year, for their work with anti-nuclear.
Yeah.
So, that's pretty cool. We had a Nobel Peace Laureate speak to our kids here, invited here by our kids who went to that, to that summit last year. So, yeah, it's a feather in their cap that they, they brought him here. It's great that our kids had the opportunity to, to hear him speak, so I just wanted to mention that.
Tweet out.
Yeah, yes, it is.
Oh, tweet. It's a tweet.
Yep. That's good news.
Other good news? Yes.
Wonderful Andy Bennett tournament this past weekend.
A little too hot, though.
No, it's the typical temperature for when it was typically done.
Poor Andy Bennett.
Be the first weekend in September, second weekend.
All right, any old business? No public comment? Other?
Yes. I just, Joe, you left this with us for FYI, but I, I just saw this on my email before we came over. I haven't really looked at it, but do you have any?
So, this is probably a good time to, to bring that up, yeah. Some of you may remember that I had mentioned to you last spring, kind of a statewide dust-up, primarily amongst school superintendents across the state, about a, I'll try to use my words carefully and, and be polite, but a, now I use the word edict. So, an edict came down from the State Education Department last February, March, kind of redefining the commissioner's regulations regarding the length of the school year. And it wasn't so much a change in the idea that minimum length of the school year in New York State is 180 days. That, that hasn't changed, but there were, there were a raft of guidance points regarding how you could count a day or not count a day for the purposes of gaining full state aid. So, for Rhinebeck, the impact was not so drastic, because we already had a, had a 184-day calendar, so we've got kind of four days of flexibility built into our calendar, but it did impact some of the things that had been in our calendar for, for years. And of course, the State Education Department was saying, these aren't changes, this is the way the regulations have always been. But there was a fair, in my opinion, there was a fair amount of interpretation of those regulations that, for most of the superintendents, at least sitting around the table at Dutchess, were saying, where did this come from? You're telling us that this has been the way we're supposed to have been calculating these days all along, and like, many of us have been doing this for a long time, and we never understood it that way. So, that tells me, not that we don't know what we're talking about, that tells me that the regulations are pretty unclear. So then we started asking a number of questions, because there were some, there was some, there was some thinking that this was going to apply to this past year, when the school year was already three-quarters of the way done, so you couldn't go back and redo the way you had days scheduled in the fall, because that, that horse is out of the barn. And the, they, we were set, we sent up through Dr. Houli, a number of Bosse superintendent, a fairly lengthy list of questions about, are you allowed to do this? How about this? Can you do this? Things like, can you have two parent-teacher conference days, which are half-days, you know, early dismissal days, in a single week? The way they calculate your instructional time is, they, they calculate not so much how many minutes in a day, they count how many minutes are in a week. So if you have two half-days, now, a lot of school districts have dropped below the minimum number of minutes for the week. So, yeah, I, I mean, you get the kind of stuff we're talking about. So, one of the things we did, and you'll notice in this year's calendar, is we scheduled our parent-teacher conference days in different weeks. So instead of doing like a Thursday and a Friday, or a Wednesday and a Thursday in the same week, we did a Thursday and a Monday to put them in different weeks, so we would not fall below the minimum number of instructional minutes in, in a week. There was also some controversy over the, the interpretation of how lunch periods count or don't count, and whether a lunch period includes or is, or is exclusive of recess. So when you're counting your instructional time, you're supposed to pull out your lunch periods and not count them towards instructional time, because kids are eating, but what about recess? Is recess more instructional than, than not? Can you count recess? You get the idea. This is, this was the discussion for several months back in the spring. And on top of it all, the State Education Department said, so this is how it'll be for the year coming up, which is 1718. We're not gonna look back at 1617 yet. What you did last year, you did, but do it this way this year, but we're going to, we're so sure about these regulations, that we're going to convene a committee at the State Education Department level, and we're gonna look at revising these regulations for 1819 and thereafter. So, this little beauty here is one of the outreach, outreach mechanisms from the State Education Department to collect input from the field. So I'm, I'm already partway through completing this, this baby. You can, you've completed or submitted if you wish. I'm going to complete it and submit it. I'm not sure you wanna get involved in the minutia of, does 20-minute recess count towards the instructional time? But, but I have to, because we need to know when we schedule this stuff, what counts, what doesn't count. I don't wanna get to the end of the year and find out that somebody audits us, and we're minutes short, and now we're gonna lose part of our state aid, because we didn't meet the minimum. Yeah, welcome to my world. So, I'm just letting you know what, what's happening out there. Apparently, Tim Kramer sent them to, to you as, as board member, so it's good to know what's going on. No decisions have been made, they're working on it. Another one of the things we did this year was, we used to take the first five days of, of kindergarten and have half-days, and we only did one this year, because that cuts into your number of minutes for that student population. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's all about this less regulatory stuff and not so much about kids and how we're meeting those needs, so. That's where, that's the nutshell, what this whole brouhaha is about.
Laura?
So, when this little questionnaire says current, and I said guidelines, that's current for 1718, not what we've all been living with.
Correct. That's correct.
So, we don't have any idea how, how they've not changed?
No.
Well, you do, but we wouldn't.
Yeah, it would be, it would take time, and I, I don't think there's really time well spent for you to do a deep dive into this. Just know what's happening, that, that's all, and I'm, I'm addressing it from my perspective, and they're convening representatives from the different Bosse's to come to hearings and give their testimony, and, and then some committee is gonna decide how to change it. Once we readjust to the new slash old way of doing it, now we'll have a new set of regulations for 201819.
So, I'm just wondering, you know, those 17 pages here, is there any of these areas that they're asking questions about, or you would think that we have concerns, or that you personally have concerns, or?
Well, I've, I've already mentioned a couple of them. That's the scheduling of the days, and, you know, how, how you can have contiguous shortened days or not. There are also issues with the, again, again, I think the big issue is counting minutes of instruction in a week versus daily minutes of instruction. I think that's like, kind of the overarching problem. And you can't have a superintendent's conference day or a parent-teacher conference during, like, a three-day week, like, the week before Thanksgiving. You can't, you gotta run full days all three of those weeks. And I know a lot of school districts, well, not a lot, but a number of them would maybe hold a dismissed kids midday and hold an afternoon superintendent's conference day. Well, you can't do that anymore, because you've already lost two days of instruction, because you're not in session on Thanksgiving, or the day after Thanksgiving. So, that, that whole paradigm, in my opinion, has to change, and then that would bring some sanity. I mean, I understand the need for a regulation, you don't want school districts not providing sufficient time for kids, but the way it's broken out now, it's, it's restrictive, it's hard to understand, and it's restrictive. So, I think that's something I would be lobbying for, to give school districts more flexibility. And how can we use the four extra days that are built into our schedule? That's not clear at all. So I wanna make sure if I'm using them, I'm using them in a way that, after the fact, is not gonna penalize the district in terms of state aid. I mean, we're not, you will recall, regardless how you may have felt about it as a parent or as a board member, we used to have like, three- or as a board member, we used to have like three half-days at the last, in the last week of school before wrapping it up. Well, by my read of the regulations, the way they are, now you can't do that anymore. So we broke up the days and they're going to work full days and I think they're missing one, one day in that last, in that last week at the elementary school. But again, it's different for elementary than it is for middle school and high school because the region stays counted as full days of instruction, even though, yeah, even though you're not instructing kids. See what I mean? It's really.
Or you might not be in school at all because you don't have an exam.
Well, that's right.
Diane's been tweeting.
You know, once again, this is so frustrating that the state will say you have to do something and then you start to do it and then they decide, oh, wait a minute, I didn't think this through. I hope there's a place I'm hearing from that frustration. I mean, for example, that, you know, you changed the kindergarten. I think that first five days, that program that we implemented was a good program and now it didn't happen this year and that's their fault.
Was educationally sound, but not according to the regulations.
So I, you know, so I understand that, you know, that hopefully their, their need to want to avoid, you know, weeks where there's nothing going on because different things are scheduled then. So I think probably they're coming from a good place, but as usual, they don't trust or allow schools to have freedom to do what's right. So maybe there'll be a waiver or something so that you can explain, like that kindergarten program, for instance, or, you know, where that might look on paper like, oh, you know, those kindergartners have, you know, so many minutes, but, you know, that is a, that's a great program that was well received and, you know, benefit to kids getting a start, a strong start in kindergarten. So good luck with the form.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we'll do our best and you'd like to think that, you'd like to think that doing something like this and submitting is actually going to impact the discussion. I mean, you've got to, you've got to go forward under the assumption that will, that it will, whether it actually does or not, but to not say anything just tells them, yeah, it's fine the way it is, so don't change anything. And it's not fine the way it is. So that's, stay tuned. That'll be an interesting discussion.
Let them work on the calendar then.
Yes, seriously.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I buy into that.
Is there any other other? Okay, so let's move on to our action items. Does anyone wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items? Second. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional advisors for Reinbeck High School for the 201718 school year, see attached. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint 201718 VMS after-school program instructors and mentors, see attached. Second. Any discussion? Those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and substitute non-instructional staff for the 201718 school year? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant award from the Reinbeck Science Foundation, RSF, in support of funding for the Fund with Energy presentation submitted by William Morrissey in the amount of $765 as stipulated? Second. Any discussion? Just want to thank the Reinbeck Science Foundation for its support of this program. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the following grant awards from the Reinbeck Parent-Teacher-Student Organization, PTSO, as follows. Huguenot Street Field Trip submitted by Erin O'Brien in the amount of $608 as stipulated and Math Tools submitted by Jill Simmons in the amount of $100 as stipulated. Second. Any discussion? I'd like to thank the PTSO for their support of these programs. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the grant award from the Community Foundations of the Hudson Valley in support of funding for the Barge College Reinbeck High School Reading and Writing Workshop submitted by Stephanie Baird in the amount of $342 as stipulated? Second. Any discussion? Thank you to the Community Foundation of the Hudson Valley. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional summer 2017 program work? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Laura Dettore as a one-to-one teacher aide assigned to a .43 FTE, three hours per diem, position with a Reinbeck student at Dutchess Bosse's effective October 10, 2017, at the pleasure of the Board of Education at a salary of Step One, $21,652 pro-rated in accordance with the Annie Salary Schedule for 201617. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the independent auditor's report for the 201617 school year? Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the 201718 superintendent's administrative goals? Second. Any discussion? Thank you, Joe. Any other? Thank you for the additional information.
Yeah, go ahead.
All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the audit committee to appoint Lisa Rosenthal as a volunteer community member of the Board of Education Audit Committee for the 201718 school year? Second. Any discussion? Grateful for Lisa Rosenthal's continuing service to this community and to the Board of Education. All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution? Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education hereby approves the reduction in the contract with Dutchess County Bosse's for the acquisition of computer technology hardware, software, and related equipment through a three-year installment purchase agreement, IPA, commencing in the 201718 school year with an original total principal cost of $66,785.66 to $32,904.92, a reduction of $33,880.74. Oh, there's more. Be it further resolved, the Reinbeck Central School District will pay Dutchess County Bosse's through its regular monthly billing cycle over the three-year period to commence during the 20172018 school year. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisors for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 201718 school year, see attached. So move. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, that is six in favor and one abstention. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the donation of four boxes, approximately 50 books of American Association of Advancement for Science, AAAS, award-winning science titles, age-appropriate for elementary students from Rugi's Subaru as part of the Subaru Loves Learning Program in recognition of the importance of STEM learning and CLS's success in educating the community's children. Second. Any discussion? We are grateful to Rugi Subaru for its generous donation. All those in favor? That is unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing employment of a particular individual? Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous, we are moving into executive session.